I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM, May 15, 2024, Planning Commission Meeting. I'm going to need a pledge of allegiance. Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Ehorn.
Here.
Commissioner Brat.
Here.
Commissioner Myers.
Here.
Commissioner Valencia, she's running a few minutes late, and Chair Vadia.
Present.
All right, there was President accountable for.
Hey, any changes to the agenda? Any changes to the agenda? All right, no changes to the agenda. A public comment consent counter forum. All matters in the consent counter are considered routine or approved by one motion and vote unless commission members or the city planner first requests that matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address commission concerning consent counter items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the chairman and commission members and not to staff and/or the audience. By state law, the commission is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation you would like distributed to the commission, please mail it to the city planner at 201 North Laxton Street, Willow, California, 95988, or email it to BturnerCityWillows.org. So, any public comments?
Good evening. Doug Ross, my name is D O U G R S, as I reside in Will. The subject I'd like to bring up is, there's a phenomenon for years is stretches along Grand Canyon Canal, about the ready mix plant curving along the canal by Jensen Park, come to refer to as the bamboo. What this bamboo has become over several years, and I've had people who I've helped who have lived there, is a, either a homeless encampment or habitatless encampment, is the word I use, and, and or a crashing grounds, for people, to use an old fashioned term. To try and be economical about what I'm trying to say, the bamboo seems to have evolved in the past two years as a phenomenon to the point where it was referred to several times in the past few months in the mirror office, I'm speaking for myself, not necessarily for the mirror, but the, what do you call it, the police dispatchers, communications box, referring to the bamboo as though we're a hotel or an inn, as a phenomenon, like is a resident of the bamboo. Well, several months ago, I did an article, Amber Bill, the Health and Human Service, said she goes in occasionally, occasionally and helps people and all, but I object to something evolving into something, people who are habitatless often have no control over their circumstances, some do, some don't, but I don't think it's proper, and I'd like to see it to be, come to be referred to as though it's a legitimate housing thing, so-and-so is a resident of the bamboo. I don't think it's proper to refer to phenomenon like that that has become a evolved place to sleep and camp, particularly Awin camping in is illegal in Glen County and extending into Willow's. I have no remedy to suggest, I'm not advocating that anything be done, I'm just stating the fact that over an evolution into the future, that I feel it would be, I feel it would be better for the city of Willow's as the evolution that was discussed today by the city council at their future envisioning workshop to, to be able to evolve something other than a bamboo scenario as a, as a place for, you know, drug down, even, even if it was to put bubble tents in a vacant lots on, that concludes my remarks, I have a lot more I'd like to say, but I think economically communicating that to you would be much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, moving on to our minutes, if I can get a motion to approve our minutes of April 25th, 2024.
I'm going to approve minutes of April 24th, 20, I mean, 25th, 2024.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those favor approving the minutes of April 25th, 2024, planning commission meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? All right, minutes passed. Public hearing. All matters in this section of the agenda, our formal public hearing will be acted on individually. Once chairperson opens the public hearing, members of the public may request to speak. When you are called on by the chair, please state your name clearly for the audio recording. If you have any documentation you would like to be issued to the commission, please give it to the city planner for distribution. So we have an item of minor use permit, file number UP2402, West Sycamore Street and North Bloomers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this file, this project is an application for a food trailer located on vacant land at the corner of Sycamore and Bloomers. As you can see, the blue arrow on the aerial photo shows the location of the site, just around, you know, not far from around the corner from here. This, the site is currently vacant, the applicant wishes to install food trailer on the site. The central commercial zoning district allows with a conditional use permit, uses permitted with a, a potential use permit, mobile business operations, so that is why we're bringing this use permit to the planning commission today. The next slide is a shot of the vacant lot as it sits today. The next several slides, I'm not going to, they're available if you want to inspect them further, and the applicant is here, if you have any questions about the specific details of the food trailer, but we wanted to give you as much information as was possible, but I'll move on to the picture of the, of the trailer painted blue. That's the front, this would be the rear of the trailer. They do have a current active food permit through the environmental health department from the county of Glenn. We do have a site plan that was prepared by the applicant showing the location of the food truck, the location of the generator, the carport, and the location of the restrooms. I do want to point out that there is a large tree located on the upper right-hand corner where the restrooms are, that will provide some partial screening. They're also proposing a carport as a customer sitting area. We've included all the information about the generator, it is identified as a silent generator, I will invite the applicant if they want to share any more information about that, but it's all here. The applicant is currently receiving bids on a cost of laying asphalt versus concrete for landscaping on the site, and a current local landscaper has been contacted to maintain the grounds. Regarding general services, the handicap accessibility will be addressed through asphalt or concrete grounds, the restroom accessibility will be provided on the 50 feet away on the north east corner of the site, and then general parking is available through Sycamore and Bloomer Streets, although this isn't a central commercial, so off-street parking is not, is not required, it's exempt. In the future, the applicant has indicated that they do intend to set up permanent electrical sewer and water utilities, and then build a brick and mortar location with a, say, a butcher meat store for their own commissary and a possible residential unit on the upstairs floor. We do have a planning commission resolution for you to conduct a public hearing, find the project as exempt from CEQA, find it consistent with the general plan of municipal code, subject to the conditions of approval. I want to note again that this is a conditional use permit, the commission can approve, they can deny, or they can modify the application as part of this public meeting, so you could add conditions of approval if you wish to, such as annual reviews, I want to throw that out there. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Okay, start with, can I share questions or comments?
So, do we know what the timeline is, what are you thinking about your frickin' mortar building, how long before you're gonna attempt that?
Hi. So, we're thinking probably like in a four-year plan, so we want to first establish ourselves, get, get it going, and then going into building that.
Right, right, I understand that, I just was not looking at a 20-year plan.
Oh, no, 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 no. It's more like a four-year plan. Try to get as much established as we can and build from there.
You go ahead and state your name for the record.
Christina Alcampo. Christina Alcampo, and.
Any other questions you might have heard? Well, I really appreciate you gave them a lot more details, we had just some conditions on the last person that applied, and, you know, with those conditions came because we had no information, I'm glad that, you know, you're proposing at least timeframe, you know, to build some capital and to build at least future, you know, be invested in the community. I know you and your family are longtime residents, so we appreciate, you know, you doing that.
Thank you.
A few things. In the discussion and analysis, I noted that in the surrounding zoning, it says, states that it is the same as the site with commercial uses to the north, I believe that's residential profession, if, if I'm looking at that correctly.
I think that you are correct, that is residential professional to the immediate north.
It's my understanding that, oops, sorry. That for a structure, anything over 10 by 12 or 100 square feet, needs a building permit. I located in the applicant's letter that the building size is actually going to be 18 by 20 by eight. I didn't see any mention of a building permit for that particular.
A building permit will be required for that.
Okay, so then that becomes a part of the condition?
It can, it can be, I mean, it was, they will need to submit a building permit for any improvements on, on the site that require a building permit, and that is one that does require a building permit, we can, we can call it out and add that as a condition, just to ensure that everyone's aware.
Okay, thank you. Also, I, I looked for the noticing of this public hearing in the paper, and I didn't find that until today, is that within the legal timeline for publishing a public hearing?
It should have been published.
I think it was like May, May 5th.
It should have been published the Saturday before.
Doug, do you know? So was there a legal notice in the paper that you're aware of?
There was a legal notice, but I believe that it's not, it was not located in the usual section where you would find legal notices, I think it ended up on the last page of the paper. But it did make the paper by the deadline, I can go look up the exact paper if you'd like.
I just want to make sure that.
Yes, no, absolutely.
And property owners within 300 feet, did, did they receive letters, is that a part of this as well?
You should have received letters, yeah.
Okay.
We're copying the notice.
Okay, all right. You, you went over this a little bit earlier, that, that, and I noted that the project stated on the map that it would be an ass, well, actually in the write-up for the project, it stated asphalt, but in, in the applicant's concept plan, it says gravel rock, so do we have a clarification on what that will be?
I would consult with the applicant on that, the asphalt was what was in the application, and then gravel rock was provided at a later time, so it's, I think they're, I think they're still evolving their concepts.
It's hard to prove without knowing what, if, is it going to be rock, is it going to be gravel, or is it going to be?
Could we ask, I mean, they're right here. Sure.
And I'll also point out, while the gentleman's on to the microphone, that we wouldn't require one or the other, at least as, as staff, but the commission has the ability to say to direct.
Probably where this is going to come into play somewhat, I would imagine, is he, I would assume that he will have to have a handicap parking spot, which would have to be on some sort of stable foundation.
I'll check on that while.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Juan Alcampo, so I wanted, the first I started trying to pull gravel, the reason is my, my balance is a little too short, but I want to work in whatever the city, the city required it, so you want a cement, I can pull cement, you want asphalt, I can pull asphalt, so this is the reason I totally like, I work in whatever to the recommendation to the city want.
Okay, so when I look at your, your site plan. It, it appears that the, the rock or the asphalt is clear up to the street, and I don't know if you have a better view of that, Byron, in the slide of the site plan?
Okay, so the first, I got it, I want to pull the, the food truck, and then the carpool on the side, the reason is because I want to, when it's wetting, or I mean raining or something, customers stay, are no wet, so I know got it, I got, I, this is the plan, but you want some changes, I can do it, so this is the reason I know that in nothing, yeah, because I want to wait for you guys first, so you want to move something, I can do it exactly whatever the city recommended, specific the carpool, I can pick any color the city recommended, the color, so I working with the city, I stay in this town, in this community for a long time, I working in Sunnyford, now Marville, and this project not started in like month ago, this project started like year and a half ago, because I mean, like I said, my packet is a little too tight, and I will buy things, a lot of little things every day, but I want to working with my community, so my city told me, hey, I know one of you trailer there, I want it down the corner, I know that it trouble to move it, that's my city told me, hey, I want you pull cement, I'm agree, I pull cement, whatever the city recommendation, believe me, I working with whatever the city recommended.
I think I'm going to add to that, I think if I'm correct, the plan is, you know, if we can get him up and going with what, what recommendations we have thought for his future plan for four years, is where the business plan comes in, and I think that's where the smaller details, such as maybe that you're saying he's going to need, you know, parking spots for an ADA compliant, and more of those details, right? Okay, so are you asking if we're going to include it now into the long plan or the current version?
I, it's my belief that this project, and I'm not really looking too much beyond the project that we're looking at, because that's really what we're seeing before us, it's my belief, and I may be incorrect, that this project has to have a handicap parking spot, and so that's why I'm asking whether the surface is rubber for concrete, where is it going to be, I don't know the code, I would assume that a handicap parking spot can't be gravel.
Well, the thing is, in this case, though, this is in the parking exemption overlay zone, so no off-street parking is actually required for this use, it's city provided parking, it's on the street, so there should be handicap parking already provided by the city.
There is none there, I don't believe.
Maybe the city might, might want to take a look at, but we, the, the code does not require off-street parking in this location.
Okay, I understand that, and I'm not sure if there's a handicap parking spot at the post office, I don't think there is, because I don't think the ramp going up to the post office is handicap compliant, so there is no handicap, but I think most businesses have had to, well, I'm not going to say that, I don't know, but.
I got a, answer for those, so I talked to some people, and I told it, like, I want to walk like the whole 150 feet, and I want to pull the handicap for the people, I mean, I want to do all this information already, only whatever is not my plans right now is do the, the ramp, so because, I mean, like I said, that I told me the ramp is a little expensive, and it's not my plan, but you're required and make it a ramp, I know that it trouble to working in those deal, so I got people, so give me estimates and all this, so when you told me that, yes, I can pull my trailer there, I can go with you with the specific, how many foot is the one side, how many foot is on the other side, what is the handcuff, handcuff, and everything, whatever you're requiring me right now, so but like I said, I know one, got it nothing, yeah, because I need to know first, before I started putting money there, so I can pull my trailer there or not.
All right, Byron, I think the question that needs to be answered is, currently, if there isn't a handicap parking spot, if the city can put one in, like, you know, just the pain of itself, off, off-street, if that's, I don't know, what, you know, what the scenario would have looked like.
That's a question I would need to discuss the public works department.
Yeah, because I mean, you are correct, I, I just went to the post office just before I came here, and I didn't see any handicap or accessibility as well, so.
What do you think, Mr.? Is this exactly what you're going to get, or is this just an example?
Yes, this is, is something like whatever I looking for, but like I say, you know, like it's something, I can remove it, so like I say, I got it, I got.
And, and this is for the shade, for the custard, right?
Yes, because the trailer never be there, so it's only for shade for the customer.
Okay, yeah, because you have to take the trailer home every night, according to environmental health, yeah, so, so once you do your building, is this going to stay?
Yes, this is the plan, yeah, this is the plan, so like I said, that right, in case you told me I know can do it, you want to like mobile carpool, so I do different plan, so that right, I want to working with whatever your recommendation.
Yeah, because like other places, the downtown area has guidelines to follow too for certain things, and I don't know if anybody wants to be concerned about what the carport area looks like, because if it's going to stay, it was just going to be there for a while, but if it's going to stay, maybe something a little more, I don't know, blending in with the, whatever the guidelines are.
Okay.
It might be just a color.
Byron can, can get you guidelines, yeah, just something maybe that looks a little more, you know, if we're going to leave it permanent.
Yeah, so whatever you told me, it's all I, I do it.
Because I'm all freaking outside, love you.
Maria, you had made a comment at the last meeting, and it kind of made me curious, and so I kind of made a list of things that I thought maybe should be conditions that were added to this, based on prior applications for the same type of business, and you guys want me to just read them? So these would be, these are conditions, so removal of trash daily, putting a conditional use term of one year.
Yeah, to review it, I don't.
Yeah, that's good.
Upon closure of this business, should that happen, all structures to be removed within 30 days. That the operation of the mobile food unit should be operated in accordance with the California law. The mobile food unit is to have annual inspections by environmental health. This goes back to whether it's gravel or asphalt, site surface to be solid and include disabled parking and striping and meet ADA requirements, including signage, which seems to be kind of, we're not, we don't, we're not really sure about that right now, I know Red 88 was required to do, even though they're not required to have parking on the street, they were required to do an ADA parking space, I'm going to guess that the Henry's shop there on the corner was also required to do ADA parking, I don't feel that that's something that we should give a pass on for this, when other businesses that have just recently been permitted.
There must be something encoded, but it's not my code, I don't do ADA compliance codes, maybe someone, or somebody, I mean, there's.
So I'm guessing.
I will point out that with both the examples that you mentioned, the 88 parking was proposed by the applicant, in this case, they have volunteered handicap parking on that side of the, there's a lot, not so much detail, but they have volunteered provide handicap, handicap park, so we can add it as a condition.
Okay. So he'll, he'll be getting a building permit to put that, that structure up because of the size of it, with that, are, are you required to do a percentage of handicap improvements with the building permit of that type?
I don't have an answer to that question, as far as the improvements, I mean, it's, it's a shade structure, so it needs to be safe, the building department's going to ensure that, that it's anchored properly and meets all the wind loads and things like that, as far as accessibility, it's that, seems that that would be part of the safety portion of it.
Okay, I was just thinking that if that is a part of it, that there's a requirement to do a percentage of, that maybe that parking space would, you know, would cover that. Should the hours of operations change, provide city with the revised hours? Adhere to design review approval for the carport, I. I agree with Marie on that, that, that needs, I think we need to look at that closer, the carport structure itself.
Yeah, you just, a little tweak on there, maybe.
Any contractors or subcontractors shall have a valid city business license, of course, submit for the building permit for the carport, if not self-contained, show the proposed water service, I, I didn't have a copy of the, the food truck picture that you showed to us. I didn't have a copy of the, the food truck picture that you showed to us. Here earlier, so I, I don't know if it's self-contained as far as water.
Can you, uh, elaborate on that?
So all that contains the waters is inside. You can see in this right there, got it for, uh. For three sinks for different things and got a one for him to wash it. So all the water, all the, whatever you need is inside. So you need a picture, I can take a picture tomorrow today. And send, I make it for, take it in your office tomorrow in case you want.
That's okay. I just think, uh, if, if, if it wasn't a self-contained truck, I think that we needed to know where the water was going to come from.
Yes, my wife, actually, I talked to the health inspector already about it. Uh, so I wanna pull it up, uh, because the, I need to pull it up in, in the sun. In Marvell is the place I need to pull it up the water. And my wife, she got my better information where I throw away all the dirty water. So this I do a daily.
Okay.
So Marvell is our commissary, so we have to, according to the health department, we have to go load up our water tanks. Through Marvell and also, um, our waste there. So daily we will be doing that, look, loading up our, our water tanks there and unloading there. So.
And you said also, um, releasing your waste?
Like the, the dirty.
How do you do that? And where's it go?
Is the, the inspector probably provided some of those details if they're getting permitted.
I have to go look at people, but I guess there is, um, a place where I have to go dump the water. But my understanding was that, was my commissary was Marvell, and that's where I had to go.
Yeah, that's why I was asking where at Marvell, do you dump the water?
Yeah, and I'm like, I'm like looking at him because he's the one that works there, so.
Okay, um. I think that, that's a question that we need to answer. I don't know where you would dump that at Marvell.
Um, no, he just, he said that he got the address from the inspector, but it's probably not.
Uh, yeah, I wouldn't be sure environmental health probably tells them where they gotta.
That would be part of their food have their permit.
Yeah, if they gone through the process of.
Okay, I'm.
I'm just saying.
I just kind of did a compilation of prior u- uses that were done, so, um. And then for the operation, I didn't see anything. I think this needs to be in, in the, um. Conditions as well. For operation of the generator, provide a quality, uh, clearance from the county. Um, I noted that in the, in the packet. Uh, it was noted that it was silent. I don't know that any generator is actually silent. It might be quiet, but I doubt that it's silent.
And we, we actually did a lot of shopping, and this one that we found was the quietest one out there. And we went through all the reviews, like the people, before purchasing it and everything. So, but we did originally purchase one from. So we took it back and did our digital inspection. We had to chuck around for someone.
Right, yeah, okay. I have concerns about that because we are bordering a residential zone. So I have concerns about them, the, the, uh. How loud that is.
We do plan in the future to, to get an actual kit set up through P B E and have, you know.
I, I suppose there's a code for how loud it can be, so. Um. And, and, uh, as another condition, um. Maintain the restroom facilities in a clean manner and pump it regularly, I think needs to be on there.
Always, if I might. I think that we should, I think there should be something that hides the restroom. Instead, I mean, downtown, walking down and seeing a porta potty right there. It's gonna be at the very end where the alley is at, very corner. But if there was just like a wall, you know, something that. I still think that, I, I don't wanna see a porta potty as I'm walking to the post office or, I don't know. And also I think it'll draw people maybe that you don't want on your property. So you're suggesting to create like a, like a wall? Just some, the wall there? Just something that, yeah, I guess I am. Just something that you, so you don't see the outhouse. Where maybe just the front door is permissible? Is that kind of what you're? Yeah, I mean. I mean, I'm not, I don't design, but you know how you can, you even see like temporary, not temporary, and that you're gonna take it down, but like. Like a porter, you know, sometimes they have plants that grow up, just something that so that you don't have a porta potty as your. Maybe like, um, bushes or something to make. Something, yeah, something. Give it like a background, so it's not like, I'm here. Yeah, they have a porta potty. Yeah, yeah. But that was the thing that. Yeah, maybe the foliage or something. Yeah. Yeah, just something to disguise it and so that people just. I mean, then right across the street, you have a store that's advertising they're gonna be selling beer and alcohol, or if that's the same thing, alcohol and whatever. Anyways, so, you know, that's gonna even create more traffic, and if anybody's intoxicated or walking down the street, just keep them away. I think that's why I'm, I'm another standard kitchen for a property and seeing if there's something. I don't know how anybody else feels. They, they may say, oh, no, just. No, I don't think it's bad.
Byron, that's another question that I had. I noticed that in the conditions that they had to abide by the A B C requirements, they're not selling beer and wine, are they?
They're not proposing it, no.
No, not, not you guys, no.
It's kind of, it's a standard, it's a standard condition that, hey, you know, we're trying to. Need a permit for it, you need a permit for it, no. So you know, it's prohibited unless they had a, unless they had a, a license.
Okay, but I see it as, is it because it's on there and it's coming to us? That we're almost approving that they sell beer and wine because it's a condition, so I would like that taken off, which you would. Or if the planning commission agrees.
Are you ever planning to get a license? Okay, so I mean, that we could take it off, but if you're ever planning to, cuz in other places, I mean, there's mobile trucks like that. You know, so it's new waves, but, um, just if you're not planning to, then we could take it off.
Remove it, yeah.
Um, anything else?
Just have one more question, cuz their plan is to do possibly the building and then maybe living up the. And as far as I know, we don't have a live work in our zone for.
Uh, second floor is permissible to have residential uses.
Is it?
Yes. And anything like that would be, would also require a, uh, amendment to the use permit act.
Okay, no, I think it's a good idea.
Um, remember to deal with recommendations, I think it's pretty reasonable.
You want me to go through the, I'm gonna go through the conditions, those conditions of approval?
I'm gonna open up this, um, public hearing and then we'll.
Okay.
Um, we have now come to the public input portion of the hearing. This public hearing is being recorded and is subject to possible review by the courts. Therefore, all statements or remarks must be made clearly and distinctly into the microphone. If there's anyone in the audience who has any pertinent evidence or opinions or statements relevant to issues being heard. Please step to the microphone, and although it is not required, it is also requested that you please state and spell your name for the record. Comments are generally limited to three minutes, so open it up at six thirty-nine. Um, any public comments? Yeah, you just come on up.
My name's Glenn Williams. I live at one thirty-nine North Plumas, across the street from where this is being proposed. Um, I hear a lot of talk about the legalities of what is wanting to be built there, put up there and erected. Um, I, I, there's a lot of rules that govern permitting. One thing I don't hear is the fact that it's a historical district of town in this area. That's a historical residential area. I see signs that say residential area or historical area of Willows. And pointing down here, the, uh, Centennial Home, Mr. and Mrs. Coon. Live across the street. How many of you have seen their house? Okay, two of you?
No.
Three of you? From their front, from their front yard, which is immaculate, and their house and their front porch, which is immaculate. That, that's gonna be their view. A food truck and some outhouses. Porta potties, outhouses, whatever you wanna call them. And, and that's not appropriate in this part of town. I've, I've owned the house that, that they're next door. I'm their next door neighbor. I've owned that house for twelve years, and I've gone through a lot of time and a lot of money and a lot of work. To try to restore our house. To bring it up to the standard that it was when it was first built back in the nineteen, early nineteen hundreds, late eighteen hundreds. When it was brought in from our toys with a team of mules. Um, I've got a lot of friends and family come and visit from, from in-state and from out-of-state and showing them around. It's a historical, I mean, you got the museum, you've got the post office, you've got memorial hall, you've got the county courthouse. All of these, all of these antique historical buildings are all around this area. And I've brought people in that were just amazed at, at the architecture and, and, and the, and the houses up and down Plumas Street. I don't think they'd have been quite as impressed if they would have come here to visit and, and had a, a taco truck and. And outhouses across the street. I think that's something that should be taken in, into account by you folks before you approve anything like this. And I invite you to come over and take a look from, from our front yard, from the Coon's front yard. And, and see what a, what a, what a view it is. I mean, it. It's, it's not made for what's being proposed. There's other places in town that it could, that this could be put up and, and the business could do just as well. This is gonna increase traffic, foot traffic, it's gonna increase vehicular traffic, it's gonna increase garbage. People walk down the sidewalk all the time and they throw their, their empty cups out on our lawn. They throw their cigarette butts and stuff out on their lawns. It's just gonna increase all of that and devalue the property that we've worked so hard to maintain. Thank you.
I have a couple things. My name is Jana Smith, and I own the home at one forty North Plumas. Just sold the house at one thirty-two North Plumas. I have a letter from the gentleman and his wife. Um, who live at the house one thirty-three, one thirty-North Plumas, which is the house directly next. This is the real copy. The house directly next to the property to the north. So that's one, two, three houses, as well as the two across the street. My first comment is, not only did I, as a homeowner, landlord. At one forty North Plumas, did not receive a letter about the store going across in the old title building. I just happened to find out about this four hours ago. And I'm not happy about that in any way, shape, or form. That's not fair. Shouldn't be legal that we not receive notice about what's going on. As, as landowners, as homeowners. The second thing. I have no problem with someone coming in and bringing business to our town, and I have no problem with what you're trying to do at all. I think they're wonderful. But again, that corner used to have a historic house on it. The corner on the other side of the street where Mr. and Mrs. Coon had a historical house on it. Of course, they're not there now. But this is, it's a commercial or business area, but not so much. I, I mean, I was really shocked to see we were gonna have a grocery store across the street at the title building. Now, I mean, it's, it's, it's not anybody on the planning commission or the city council's fault that nobody wants to. Come and invest for whatever reasons, you know, and you should not be to blame. But we still need to do what's appropriate in appropriate areas. I grew up on that street and it, it feels really strange to see what's going on. My other, um, comment is. I own the house three houses up, next, um, two down from the museum still, the old Frantini House, which was built in the eighteen hundreds. And my father built a big garage on the back of it. And then the post office decided to put a post box there that people could drive through. That is one of the busiest streets in Willows, and it's an alley. So not only is that alley gonna have people going both ways, where you have handicap parking, that's an alley. You're gonna have people wanting to turn in to get their passenger to put the mail in, or they're gonna be coming through the other direction because it happens all the time. And it's already a mess. And whose responsibility is that? Did I ever, was I ever very happy, or even my father, Dick Bond? Happy about the post office making that a drop-through alley? No. And, and I don't know the legalities of who's got the alley, but it's gonna be busy. And these are just some of the, the things that I see, and this has nothing to do with the visual. And the, and, and what do we want? I mean, I'm still shocked that we have a grocery store going across the street. One more small little grocery store, when they should all be going to Marvell. So anyway, I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think this is the place for it. Um, even to think about having a meat market there is interesting. Uh, and I'm not sure what the answer is. But my main concerns were, this, this gentleman and his wife. They bought that house because it was such a quiet street, and it was wide, and they really loved it. And they had no idea until I knocked on their door three hours ago and said, were you aware that they're going to put. Um, a food truck next door? And he looked at me and he's, no. And they couldn't be here tonight. But I, he did write a letter. I helped him and signed it, and I said, I can take this for you, and he says, that would be great. He said he would try to come, but they had a church. So again, I support this town. I've been here since nineteen sixty-four, longer than most everybody else. I grew up two blocks away. I am all for Willows, but let's do it appropriately. You, and I don't have an answer for it cuz I've been watching everybody struggle, and I've served. In many capacities, as you know, for the last forty-five years volunteering with the fire department, rainbow girls, you name it. And I don't come in, get involved as much anymore because I'm getting selfish with my time. But when I heard about this, I'm just kind of like. I'm frustrated and frustrated for you and for people wanting to come and, and do something in our town. I don't wanna dissuade them. I wanna make it easier for them, but we gotta do it properly because. Once they invest and get going, we can't, it can't go backwards, and so we have to do, we have to really do this with some thought. Not just with, oh, that sounds good, let's just okay it. So I think this really needs some thought before it gets passed. Needs some thought. Thank you.
Hi, Marvin Coon. I have Kevin, Jane, and I, they're right across the street. If that, we'll be right in our front yard. That's exactly what we'll see when we open up the front door. Um, we at one time thought out about putting something on our property that's south of our house. And they said it had to be Victorian in style, two-story, people live upstairs and a business downstairs. Well, none of that has ever happened. I, I feel it will increase the, there is some traffic on the road. And the noise from motors will keep us awake. I went wander around all night anyway. And I am concerned about the noise as well as the looks. We need businesses in town. We definitely need businesses in town. And this might be a good business to have. But I don't think it's the right business, the right style. You know, I really care about Willow's. That's why we put our hearts and soul in it. And I feel like this is going to destroy it.
I, I'm Randy Garner. Um, I'm a resident of Willow's as well, and we have a building that's right behind the convenience store. So we've been here before. Uh, I, I think with regard to this, I, I support everything that they've just said, but I, I also, I was here just a few weeks back and we went over again, a site plan where there was a, uh, you know, a food service truck was going to be located there. There was discussion of what kind of bathrooms are going to be, what kind of improvements are we going to be, what kind of, uh, uh, you know, you know, landscaping, all of that was, was there. And, and there was, it seemed to me, I'm sorry, but it seemed to me the staff did very little vetting of obvious questions that should be raised about everything. I think that is a disservice to the people who want to establish these businesses. I sat here to meet last time and I really thought that the council was going to return it to the staff and say, hey, give us more details. Because they, the discussions then were about a different bathroom. The blue bathrooms wouldn't be allowed. There had to be plumbing. There had to be electricity. I mean, so we're looking, you know, I don't even know. I mean, it's like we're on the no-plan plan. You know, here, here in Willow's right now, there, there's a business out there by the gas stations. There's a red tin out there that serves food at night. I don't even, I, I've heard that's not even legal. I don't even know what's going on. So we don't know what's going on in the community, but I think all these projects have to be better vetted. Let the people know what's expected of them. I'm, I'm not against businesses come to town. I do agree that I think there's appropriate places for businesses. Uh, but there also has to be appropriate planning and, and you just can't show up at a meeting with a few facts and fill in the gaps and, and hopefully given anybody any direction. Because I would say right now, I don't even understand what direction's been given to the people that even want to have the business on the corner right now. Or the, the other location. I mean, something needs to come before the city council that even the public can comment on rather than just be exasperated. We don't know what's going on. I mean, one week, blue toilets, next week or last week, two weeks ago, no blue toilets. You know, and, and I don't really know the, the, how the blue toilets necessarily work, but I do know they have a little lock on them, but uh, I think they're pretty much a twenty-four hour a day toilet and I hate to burden these people with the cleaning job for that, you know, so. And then, and then at the same time, I don't think you can just on a city lot create a structure like a toilet that's not related to any business. I mean, so yeah, I understand what they're doing. It just seems like we're creating buildings. We make somebody have to jump through all the hoops, create a building and, and, and do all this. And then the next one can't even learn from the previous one what to do. So I, I'm just, I, I respectfully request you guys submit this to planning, say it, our staff and say, this needs a lot more work. We need to give people a direction and you guys need to give direction. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Quite a long day. Uh, my name is Tim Silk. I live on one forty North Plumas. And, um, I just found out about this also, you know, and, uh, with all the new businesses that's already been on around the corner. And down on Portview Street, new businesses with all the high school kids coming and going. All I know is that when you come through, uh, they vandalize the back end of the garage that's back there. Uh, the trash and, uh, there's been quite a few homeless people sleeping here and there and find out if they have a couple of porta potties out there or whatever, you know, it's just, I'm just thinking it's not such a good idea. Definitely more thought needs to go into it. And, and I do like to see Willow's grow, but more thought needs to be done. Thank you.
Other public comments?
I want to say that I, I do feel that and I, I'd be able to be handy for you guys. Uh, we love Willow's. Um, I grew up here, I brother's in Princeton, so I just, all I did was, I just, I didn't, um, I just want my future, my future, I just want to have more roots. And I just want these Willow's, that's true of Willow's. And I am, we are so open to giving suggestions. We have not, that needs to be, needs to be done. Uh, our, our operation has, um, it's on eight AM, six PM, much in the night. I'm usually not on, serving, but he's, you know, my waiting to be us, listening to agents. We just want to, you know, go with, with Willow's. So, um, any suggestions that you guys can have? You guys are welcome to come to us and we both address them and, and we, we don't want to be police of, of properties and we're going to settle. We're not, we, we are very family oriented. We are not making of, 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 we're quicker and like, we go outside every day, everything. We want to be we, I think about students, uh, not even a customer, not even a big sale. We're not so sure to, to spend a lot. Yes, we want to be, for everyone, an answer. Um, that, that you guys, we, I can always go in and just figure our, our business times that you guys have a, a cell phone number. We do, we, we're concerned anything that happens that we're not aware of, we would love to, we, we will not put on, sign on the highest of the east. So I just wanted to say that we are here. A family, a, a family business. When our sons come from outside and, and build here, we, we are, we want to be abroad too. So I just wanted to say. So we are all, we, we, my husband, my children.
Thank you.
Think I added to whatever my wife said, for us, one of my kids, I like it, raise this guy, go to this, because I love to see it. You know, I stay in and everything. Uh, well, I want my advice, I don't want to say, hey, I want to be here because I want to know, because, like I said, this project started a year and a half ago. Not for life, I mean, I don't reach that, so I can't expect on the sale. Something I can promise, if you decide to give me the, okay, I can make my own, my own entry for the people writing for the, I can promise. When they find out, give me chance like this month for that a little bit more money, I promise, make it up my own. So the tactics that people know about the value. And all the things that I promise, the people aside, we can, we are, I participate there, all people, they, they, my kids, they have been in this one, that, and that. So I promise, I like everything really clean. You can see my lot right now. I got a lot, you can, two days a month. So, I see the big trees, it's dangerous for the community. I started to, because I started pulling and I see it's really dangerous. Somebody walking and maybe they're not, you know, what they see. No matter what I got it, okay or not, I'm working at my lot because I like, here it is. I give them, everything looking clear, I was very, very, and I was very, people are very, I understand all these points. But please, I promise, I thought two persons would be honest, like, whatever, whatever, any moment if you are, and I like this, I promise the people. I don't want to, this is my lot, I can do forever now. I promise to me, I do it, I do it, thank you. Thank you.
Our home was built in eighteen seventy-seven, a year after Willow's founded. I'm concerned that the whole character of the downtown is changing. And it, it, it's a real concern for me. I think it changes the whole character of Willow's if you're not very, very careful.
Any other public comments?
Jan Smith. I totally commend you for all of that. And I do know that you are very committed to a good project. I don't know if there's any landscaping or anything that can be done to do that. And as far as the historical part of Willow's, how you can even, I mean, in this day and age with a building, putting a building up there in the future, you know, to kind of continue with the theme. It, it's going to be difficult and costly because that kind of stuff is very costly. Um, I warn you about the traffic because I look at that and I think, oh my goodness, it's already so busy. The post office already doesn't have enough parking. The legal service across the street doesn't have enough parking. I mean, it's, it's not something that can't be addressed, but I think it's something that needs to be looked at carefully. Not to say no, but to find answers and to make it amiable. And thank you for cutting down that tree. It's been dangerous for years. So anyway, again, we need to slow down. We need to really look at it. We need to really think about it. And, and we are appreciative of families that want to stay in Willow's and support our town. I never moved away. I'm still here.
Any other public comments? Okay, I'm going to close public comment at seven oh two.
I, I've, um, first of all, I appreciate everyone's comments. I think the number one thing that is, is not the number one concern, but it's a huge concern for me is the fact that none of you received letters. That really bothers me because when the store came before us, we actually voted that down. And the city council approved it. And you probably didn't even know any of that either. Um, I too share concerns with, one of the things that I keep saying because I'm the newbie on here is that, you know, I feel like we don't have a plan. I know the city is trying to come up with a plan, but meanwhile they're asking us to vote on things that change things. I also question the historical downtown. I also question why land is being sold and people are under the impression that it's a great idea to place something there and then it has to come before us. You know, it's, that's a concern to me. Um, I, uh, I don't know how the vote is going to go tonight, but I would encourage you either way to make sure that you attend the city council meeting. Because if it's voted in favor that they have it, it won't go before the city council, but if it's voted down, the city council probably will override us. So I would encourage you to also let the city council or the city know you're not getting letters. I've, I've asked that. I've, I feel like when we voted down the store, I questioned why didn't any city council members want to know why we voted the way we did? So I, I don't know that. But that's all I have to say.
If I can, uh, add to that, I, I think that's where us at the planning commission also needs to align its views with that of the city council. I know they had a meeting earlier today on, um, their three to five year plan of, you know, what goals.
Right.
I wasn't able to make it. I hope to watch the recording later. Um, so that's again, that's kind of where we work as a team with them as well and align our views. Um, a common theme that I've heard a lot was change. And I know change can be scary, but it's not necessarily a bad thing. Uh, when it comes to the food truck industry, it's actually grown over the last ten years. And I am pretty sure that it's going to continue to grow. Um, besides that, I, I know for, I don't want to use the phrase older people, but I know it's not, the millennials tend to be the ones that go for food trucks. Or so it's a more of a millennial thing, more than an older people thing, I guess, so to speak. Um, but again, it's not a bad thing, even with, um, this food truck specifically, there is history to it. Um, I know you guys are from Zacatecas, correct? And, um, historically it is one of the states where a lot of the Spanish-speaking community that lives here is from that state as well. And they've rooted themselves here for, I want to say maybe over fifty years. I know some of the first people that moved here that were Spanish speakers, there are, I've actually, uh, with some of their grandkids. So there's history there. It might not be, uh, you know, late eighteenth century or early nineteen hundreds, um, timeframe, but again, it's, it's okay for it to grow. It's okay for Willow's to grow. It's okay for it to grow differently. It's okay for it to grow in a way where it also follows the trends of the younger people because we are the ones that are, you know, probably going to be here longer. And I, I think, and I, and I don't mean it to be disrespectful in any way, shape or form, but again, it kind of ties back in with change, right? And, um, there's culture in this town and it's okay for, uh, different cultures to blend together and, you know, share what we have to offer. And, um, I think that that's kind of all that I have to say. I, I know I've also heard, um, the comments about, uh, you know, it's not in the right location, but it's an empty lot. Okay, right? With, if we could have something on there that can possibly make money and attract people to the town or people further into downtown, is that not a good idea? I mean, we're on the verge of being unincorporated here in a couple of years if the sales tax doesn't pass in November. So that's something that we have to kind of consider also in the long run, not just right now, whether we like how this looks, whether we like the idea or whether it fits with our own personal beliefs or own personal biases. So I just wanted to share that.
May I just comment? I just want to say the older generation, I'll include myself in that, pay the taxes. And downtown Willow's is known for its historic. That, that's what it's advertised as. And so while I respect that diversity, we also need to respect downtown Willow's and what we say that it is. And we advertise it as historic downtown Willow's. And I think we need to think about that.
Something to consider, yes. I, I think we need to think about it too. But again, I have lived here all of my, I've been fourth generation born and raised here. Haven't gone anywhere. And Willow's, downtown Willow's does not like it, look like it used to. The sixties redevelopment took away a lot of stuff. Lot of nice buildings, lot of architecture. And now we're kind of left here hanging and we've got to kind of figure out how to move forward. And unfortunately sometimes, you know, maybe it is change. Maybe we do have to do something a little differently because you know, we got our, everything I thought this town was going to be is gone. It's not like if you go to another town where they've kept all their historical buildings. We got the Willow Walk and they tore down blocks of historical buildings. If you've seen the old picture, that's what I remember seeing as a kid here. So it's tough both ways. I feel it. I want to retain historical, but you know.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a hard, um, position to be in. Um, me futuristically thinking and trying to look at the overall view respectfully, you know, letting everybody's thoughts and, and, uh, comments. We did say about the one-year review. Um, when you purchase land, um, did they talk about any about the history, what it's about downtown? Or it was just a plot of land? Because that's, I mean, I think in the, in the, you know, the, the communication of you're buying or you're selling this land, um, this is what it should look like. It's a conversation I think that is beyond us. So if someone's selling land, they're selling land, I don't think they're selling historical downtown land. And I think that might be the, you know, the conflict that we're, we're hearing here. They purchased land without hearing historical downtown. Where before they purchased the land, if they would have heard some of these, you know, conversations, maybe they would have selected a different plot of land to where it would have been, you know, more sustainable for them. Um, if they're looking to build, let's say their residency on their plot of land to accommodate the historic. Um, if they're looking to build, let's say their residency on their plot of land to accommodate the historic or similarities to downtown. I think it, the business aspect is what they're looking at is building, uh, capital to expand the business in the future. And I don't know if that's in their, you guys' plans, that'd be like, this is my one spot that I want to build on. I don't know how the other food trucks do if they rent, um, plots of land or they've actually purchased their own land. Because there's a couple of other food trucks and I don't know what kind of deals are happening over there. But what comes to my mind is just, it's, it's a year that you try it out. And all the concerns are either hurt and you're like, you know what, we were right on all of them. Or it actually is kind of working out okay. And it's a kind of a happy medium to start with. That's my thoughts, you know? Everybody is heard. Both ends are kind of talked about. More details can be brought to the table. More conditions and. You know, within the day, not everybody's going to be happy. And, and that's our goal. And we could say yes, we could say no, and it could be overturned. That's kind of where, where the book.
Could I offer a suggestion?
Yep.
For purposes of the, this meeting. Um, you know, I said that you, you can approve it, you can deny it, you can modify it, you can also continue it. There is one reason why we might want to consider continuation tonight is because we can't, from this seat, I can't confirm. That the three hundred foot notices went out. I can confirm that it was in the newspaper, but I'm hearing people that are saying they didn't get, didn't get a letter. And there may be more people out there who didn't get it that should be here tonight to have their voices heard. So I want to confirm, I want to at least confirm that the proper noticing has taken place and ensure that it is. In the meantime, we can also work with the applicant to both not only add some more conditions, but also. See if there's any other historic district compatibility and downtown plan compatibility, uh, items we can, you know, work with them on and then bring it back to the commission the next year.
One thing. That I'm hearing a lot citywide. Is this desperation for businesses in our town. Because we all know that there's a lack of funding and there's a lack of money. But I don't think it constitutes just letting things happen for. From a desperation standpoint. And I kind of see this here. I don't think this fits in to the downtown. I, I, we don't truly, and I think Byron, you, you can confirm this. We truly don't have any code for mobile food trucks. Other than it's dedicated as a mobile service, a mobile business. We have no food truck guidelines at all. And hopefully with the new code, we'll begin to get some. Food trucks are great. I agree with you. I understand. But most places where you start to see a lot of food trucks congregating have food truck parks and their landscape. And they have picnic tables and they have stationary built, uh, bathroom, restroom that are built, that are aesthetically pleasing. And they have, some of them even have taken containers and they turn them into tap houses. And then the food truck people can all get together and they can, they can hire entertainment. And they can make it a happy, pleasurable experience for everybody in our community. But to put this. In the historic downtown like this, unfortunately, I would love to say to you, can you turn this into a food truck park? That's aesthetically pleasing? I don't think you can because I don't think the lot's big enough. You know, you're saying, give us some ideas of things that we can do to carry this forward. Have you ever been to a food truck park and seen? You know, there's a play area for the children, there's a place for music. I just, for lack of guidelines in our code, I think we're headed down a terrible path. This is being now food truck number four on a corner with a porta potty, sitting on an empty lot, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And I just. I think we should bring it back Byron. I.
Because of the notice or because you don't think that?
I think there's a lot, a, a lot left to be known. We, I don't, I don't really think that we should, uh, vote on this tonight.
Well, regardless of how she's going to vote, if people didn't get a notice, then we haven't done our job right.
Well, I mean, is that, who, who makes sure that those notices?
It's the, it's staff.
Yeah.
Staff, it's a staff responsibility.
Recommendation that we check on that before we vote on it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I, I think, I think we should check because your decision wouldn't be valid if it wasn't noticed.
Yeah.
So they continue it then?
So.
I, I would recommend that you continue it, uh, for two reasons. One, to ensure that the proper noticing was done. And to notice it, um, properly if it hasn't been done. Um, number two, we can look at the design criteria in the downtown plan. There is sidewalk cafes, for instance, they're compatible uses. They're not necessarily, you're right, there is nothing about, all this, everything was written prior to the rise of the, uh, mobile food trucks. You know, as part of a vibrant downtown, which they are.
Be done very nicely. But we've kind of found ourselves in not only a desperate mode, but also a place where we have no code. And so they're just popping up here and there and everywhere. And that just doesn't feel organized and right. Not, not, I mean, we're in charge of, of what's happening to our community and making good, good design decisions here. And. We just, we don't have enough information. I, I assume the new code, we're not going to probably see that for a year and a half or so.
I have another timeframe on it.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But I think we can do this better. Should we talk about the conditions that I proposed or is that, is now not the time? Is that something you want to do with the, the time that you have between now and the next meeting?
Well, the conditions that have been proposed was that the. Carport comply with downtown design guidelines. Or that, I kind of paraphrase that. Um, removal of trash daily, a one year annual review. Removal of all structures within thirty days of, of, uh, closure. If they were to close. Um, operating in accordance with the law, regular environmental health inspections. Uh, site serviced to meet ADA requirements, building permit to be required. Any hours or procedure changes, revisions, um, be provided back to the planning department. Uh, business licenses for subcontractors and contractors. Uh, environmental health, environmental, uh, air quality conform, I believe that, um, generator that they proposed was exempt from. Air quality requirements because of its size, but we can confirm that. Um, made that, that the site meet noise requirements, that they maintain the. Restrooms in a clean manner and screened. And then we remove the ABC condition. Those are the conditions that I would change. Or either add or, oh, if the commission, which is, I would add the conditions and subtract the. And then bring it back.
Could we also add on there the, oh, you, so could we add on there the verification whether the letters were sent out or not? Or?
I'll come back for that.
That's why we probably.
I mean, yeah, I, it, if the letters have not, if, if somehow they didn't get, uh, legally done, it will be done prior to the next meeting.
But we have a room full of people that say they did not receive a letter.
Can he speak?
Yeah, one second. Is it okay? Are you guys okay with the?
Go ahead.
I'm Jane Cohen. I've lived in Willow's for fifty years. And I know what, what it's like. When you look at, when you look at Willow's. You, you want to take and make it better, make it look like it should look like. And when you look at that thing there. What is that going to tell you about the downtown part of Willow? Is that really? We had a downtown that was fifty years ago that was beautiful. And. We took and got rid of a lot of the things that were really nice. And we're going to do the same thing here. Fifty years ago, we tried to take and use the, we had the block, uh, west of it. And we wanted to take and. I get the houses built that would really look nice on Fuma Street. And they said you can, if any of you have noticed where the hospital is. Just west of the hospital or south of the hospital. We had one of the most beautiful houses. Mrs. Morgan owns it now. They said, no, let's not, let's not do it. It's not, not possible. Now. If you think that there is going to take and make Willow's look really nice, that's going to be something else. But, uh. You're going to find out that the same thing has happened. They took and tore down most of the beautiful buildings. And we have very few little nice buildings left. So. Well, we want to make sure that you think twice when you look at that. Is that a really a beautiful addition to the city of Willow's? Thank you.
All right, well, we are to the part. That we're in, I'm going to need a, a motion. And with that motion comes all those conditions that you.
Can we continue it?
Uh, the, the continue it.
Okay. We need a motion to continue.
So would the motion be, I make a motion to continue this and. With adding conditions to the conditional use and subtracting one, or I'm not sure.
If that's the best rule of the commission, we can, we can do that and continue it to the next line of the mission.
Subtracting which one?
The ABC?
Oh, that's right.
And we continue, you bring back more of the.
More information.
Hmm. More information. That way the public's notified. And everybody's heard.
Yeah.
So there might be other people that might need to use it here.
So, so you don't need to make a motion on all of the, the specific changes? Because like by continuing it, you're just continuing it all. But we'll take all the recommendations as, as commission direction and then alter the, the, the content. And then when it does come back, it will include that stuff. And then we can review that then. You don't need to make much of the changes of your request if you're just continuing it on.
Continue it.
To a later date.
So I would like to make a motion to continue this application. To the next meeting or a, a meeting time that allows to add conditions to the conditional use permit. And subtract the ABC condition. And also allowing time for more information to be brought to us.
All right, I'll second it.
Hey, all this in favor of the motion presented, say aye.
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 I'm opposed. I'm staying. All right, we're continuing this. Comments and reports. So, any comments from commission?
I have a comment.
Yep.
All of, everybody here is neighbors to this proposed site. And you're also neighbors to the store. And I don't know if you can answer this here or not, but because this is my comment section, but I, I'd be curious to know how many people actually received letters for that store. Because we have a big turnout tonight and we really didn't hear from anybody except for people that were for the store that night. But that's just a huge concern of mine that. But again, I do want to say that, that we did vote no on that and the city council did override us. But I guess the reason I'm commenting on it is because you said if we would have voted tonight and no letters went out, then that would have made it null and void. And so.
No, it's, it's not an agenda item, but I, I'm pretty positive that letters went out on, but we can always go back and make sure.
So they'll need to watch for new.
So we're going to, we're going to review our petition.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there will have to be letters because this will all have to be re-noticed the next time we bring it. So then all that stuff will go out, so they'll be noted for the next one.
Thank you.
Comment?
Thank you, Steph.
All right, Steph, comments or report?
Uh, the next, my understanding that the next meeting, we will have, uh, some more colors for you to look at. Uh, revisit that top. And then I expect the item from the last commission meeting will be on this agenda as well, as well as this, as well as this, so.
That's a big agenda.
So, yeah.
Can we?
Everybody, you guys show up to.
Split that up.
May I make one more? Um, I already made this comment to the city, but, um, you mentioned about how the city is in the process of setting goals and planning and everything. And I just, I found it really disappointing that their, their meetings were in the afternoons when a lot of people can't attend. And it seems that, you know, even if they could have had one nighttime meeting. So to give the opportunity for more public to attend. I know we can watch it. I know we can watch it after, but you know, it's fun to be engaging and be a part of the conversation while it's taking place.
Anything else? Everybody's good? All right. I am going to adjourn the meeting at seven twenty-eight.